I was listening to the radio Sunday morning and I thought you were wondering what it was with you or somebody else.
No, it's true. Are we in television from saying that? I'm hearing the album today or something like that. But it sounded just like you, but then it was somebody else. It's like.
Meeting call to order, please. Join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted to stay the wisdom to make decisions which be will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public. All which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councillor Yum.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Here.
Councillor Getchea.
Here.
Councillor Janess.
Here.
Councillor Leahy.
Here.
Councillor Mercier.
Here.
Councillor Noon.
Here.
Councillor Robinson.
Here.
Councillor Rourke.
Here.
Councillor Scott. Ten present.
Any memorials or moment of silence from any councillors? If there's none, I do have one and this is an objection, I'd like to read from here. This is in honor of Mel King, which this week we lower the flag to half mast. And I would like to read something for him and then do the moment of duck and chamber to honor him. I would like to request a moment of silence in duck and chamber and pay tribute to activist, organizer and civil rights leader Mel King, who passed away at the age of 94 on Tuesday, March 28th. In his political career, King was especially known for his 1983 mayoral run, which made him the first black mayoral candidate to advance to a general election. During his run for office, his campaign for positivity and unity under the Rainbow Coalition, named for the many racial groups that supported him, helped to mend the desperate state of race relations in Boston. King also served as a state representative from 1973 to 1982 and fought for countless victories in affordable housing and employment. Beyond his work as a community organizer and activist, King also worked at MIT as an adjunct professor of urban studies and planning and founded the Community Fellows Program. Reflecting on King's contributions to Boston reveals the immeasurable impact he has on society at large and their vision he had for humanity where everyone could have equal access and opportunities. King opened the South End Technology Center, ensuring the block community has access to computers and technology and fair housing. In 1996, Mel King visited Lowell Copper Square and spoke at what used to be Camara Restaurant. He was supporting the Cambodian community to organize and to become civically and politically engaged. The flag outside City Hall is flown half staff acknowledging the death of Mel King, a dedicated public servant and civil rights champion, a legendary leader for us all. Mr. Clerk, please dump the light. I'd like to welcome everyone to the chamber. It's a full house today here in the chamber in the first floor and in the gallery as well. And I welcome everyone home. Thank you for watching this council meeting. We start the meeting on the agenda, which is the mayor's business. 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept by Councillor Robinson, second by Councillor Rourke. On the face of the eye, post say no to ice habit. Motion is passed. The next item on the agenda are the citations, one of my favorite things to do. And the past few days has been exciting and I was honored to spend the time at the Boys and Girls Club event where they were honoring Youth of the Year. And I have to tell you, all the candidates, you know, they're great speaker, they're great leaders, great contributors to the community. But it's tough for the judges, they have only to pick one, one winner. And that is John Long. And I've got asked John Long to step up to the podium. So I would like to read this citation for your peers and the community to hear what you have done. And this citation is prepared by the mayor's office, the Boys and Girls Club, John, and the entire city council. So you're a very special person to receive this. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to John Long, Youth of the Year winner, Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell has honored and celebrated the most inspiring teens of Lowell and the incredible journeys for decades. These amazing young people represent the voice and spirit of hope for the future of Lowell. Each year, a winner is chosen to be Youth of the Year celebration to be an ambassador of excellence and a role model of the club experience. John has been involved with the club for over four years. He is currently a senior at Greater Lowell Technical High School. And you know something, we have a councillor here from the school. And I would like to pursue a career in film and photography. John's outstanding leadership through kinetic sculpture and the music clubhouse has allowed him to make a difference at the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell. His volunteer work and community involvement in Lowell has continued to show his dedication and devotion towards helping others. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire city council and they all signed the citation, is happy to present to you the citation. Congratulations, John. You were a great speaker the other night. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank the Boys and Girls Club and in it, who's in it. I would like to thank Na Lam and Jenna Cap for helping me become Youth of the Year, as well as the other candidates for Youth of the Year as they have motivated me to work harder on this path to become a better self for the city and myself.
Great job.
They want you guys in the picture.
The next citation is for the DIY chili soup competition. And you know, when I first ran for office, a lot of people say, you're going to lose weight because you can do a lot of walking, knock on doors. But you know, with so many great soup competition around the city year round, I think I've proven everybody wrong by tasting so many good food over the years. This one, I'd like to present a citation to last week's competition. And the amateur winner is Douglas Bourgeron. Douglas, I've got asked you to come to the podium. And again, Douglas, this citation is prepared by my office, entire city council. And they wish the councillor Noon was there, but all the councillors wished they were there to taste your chili soup that night. Official citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Douglas Bourgeron. Upon winning DIY amateur division of chili and stew contest with the beer beef barista Galactica. Community Chili Night is DIY Lowell's annual chili and stew contest. Their goal is to build community in Lowell by bringing together young people and elders, downtown and neighborhoods, townies and newcomers. This annual fundraiser celebrates the projects and events that have activated our underused spaces, brought diverse populations together and made Lowell better. Now therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, on behalf of the entire city council, each and every one of them signed this citation, honored to present to you this citation. Congratulations. Did you want to tell us your secret ingredients in the chili?
I won't to give you my secret ingredient, but I do want to thank DIY Lowell for sponsoring that event. And I want to thank my family, the Bourgeron family, for all their hard work that they've taught me over the years. And I will keep on helping Lowell as much as I can in any way I can, whether it's cooking chili or going to Folk Fest or anything I can. Thank you.
Helping us celebrate those two citation winners. Need a motion to accept place on file by Councillor Janess, second by Councillor Rida. On the face of the eye, post say no to ice habit. Motion is carried. The next, this is a very, very meaningful proclamation. As you know, the entire city, literally the health and the well-being of the resident city would not be possible without the Health Department or city. So this week is the National Public Health Week. So I would like to present this proclamation to the Health Department on behalf of the entire city council. I've got asked the members to come to the podium. It goes without saying, the entire city council members are very, very proud to present to you this proclamation. City of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, by my honor, the mayor of the city, a proclamation. Whereas the week of April 3, 2023 is National Public Health Week, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize the Lowell Health Department and the many other community partners that strive to improve the health and well-being of our community through public health strategies. Whereas the theme of our National Public Health Week is centering and celebrating cultures in health. The goal is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. Whereas the Lowell Health Department's mission is to improve the health and well-being of the people of Lowell through effective public health strategies and the promotion of health equity. They strive towards this mission by offering services including infectious disease investigation, immunization clinics, health education, substance abuse services, shops collections, tobacco control and school health for all students enrolled in the Lowell Public School, among others. Now therefore, I, Sakari Chow, mayor of the city, on behalf of the entire city council, honored to present to you this proclamation. Ms. Golden, do you have any health advice for us?
Thank you, mayor, manager, city council. It's nice to be here getting this and having this be National Public Health Week. And it's nice to be on this side and not having a motion response. But, but thank you. It's been a rough three years at the Health Department and coming out of COVID. This is nice. We do do a lot of great things at the Health Department and thank you for acknowledging us. And a lot of people here to accept this. We do a lot of great things and we'll continue doing that. Thank you.
Any other comments by any of the councillors? Councillor Mercier.
Well, I refer to Ms. Golden as my doctor. So I'm very proud of her and all the staff. They do a tremendous job in the city of 115,000 people. Not an easy task. Sometimes they go unnoticed, but today we wanted to recognize you along with Ms. Golden here. Thank you so much for everything that you do to make this city well. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. I personally, when I first got sworn in and I wasn't even here a couple of months sitting in the seat. And I ended up coming down with COVID and immediately I didn't know what to do. I reached out to Ms. Golden, she walked me right through it, was there for test strips and any questions that I might have had along the way. And if she took the time, you know, and showed the personal care like that with someone that she just met, and I've seen her in action over at the Robinson School when her and her team rolled up their sleeves and handed out, I don't know how many you did that weekend, but a couple thousand test kits to the neighborhood. And she makes sure that everybody's taken care of. It's not a one size fits all with her. It's basically what's mine's yours. And if you saw the amount of boxes that came in and she distributed them all in about four or five hours worth of team. So the community is definitely grateful and I'm personally very grateful to have professionals like this working with the city and for our community. Thank you.
Excellent comment. Anyone else? And I would like to present to you this proclamation. That was a great, again, a thank you to the Lowell Health Department. Need a motion to accept place on file by Councillor Yum, second by Councillor Janess. On the face of the eye, motion is passed.
Your honor.
Councillor Leahy.
Thank you. Could we just, could I make a motion and take something out of order? So the 11.2, so we can hear from the Wang School and get our exercise jumping up and down for pitches.
I think that was the best motion by Councillor Leahy all year long, second by Councillor Getchea, to take item 11.2 out of order. Item 11.2 is under the petitions, 11.2 miscellaneous, eighth grade students, room number 129, from Dr. Anh Wang Middle School, request permission to address council regarding addition of bike lanes in the city of Lowell. Mr. Clerk, please allow the speakers to speak. Who would like to go first?
And not having bike lanes near schools is putting kids at more risk to injury. As you can see here, we have a map of the city of Lowell, Mass, in the south side of the Merrimack River. You can see, in the south side, on the Merrimack River, you can see we have tons of bike lanes and share rows. But on the north side of the Merrimack River, we only have one bike lane. Our school is here at the Green Patch where the pinpoint is. On the other pinpoint, you can see that that is the Robinson. Issues and fun facts. There is a lack of bike lanes in neighborhoods where minorities live in the city of Lowell. 2,570% of bike crashes involve motor vehicles. According to the expert John Allen that we talked to, the size of streets need to be 28 feet wide to add bike lanes. Smaller streets need to be widened. Roads need to be repaired. Building bike lanes is far cheaper than building highways. Highways cost about $60 million to build a mile of urban freeway, but on average, less than 250,000 to build a mile bike lane. Studies find bike lanes can provide positive economic impact in cities. Bike lane research. Bike lanes have been found to cause more consistent separation between bicyclist and passing motorists and have been shown to increase safety for cyclists. In this picture, a teenage girl in 2015 was flown to the hospital with serious injuries after being struck by a vehicle while riding her bike one Sunday morning. The victim, believed to be 13 years old, was riding down Barrington Street in Lowell when she collided with a vehicle driving down South Whipple Street. Bike lanes help to keep bikers safer. While some bike lanes are only used with a painted line, some areas including, including actual barriers between bike lanes, sidewalk, and the road. In comparison between Europe and North America, cyclists in the U.S. have a higher risk of injury. Researchers may think it has to do something with bike lanes. Once bicycles have a designated space for commuting through the city, the sidewalk becomes safer for pedestrians and individuals with disabilities. Police could also require bike lanes to use, bike lanes to use bikers rather than the sidewalks. The addition of bike lanes create a safer feeling for people who would like to ride their bike if they felt it was a safe option. Not only does biking cut down fuel use, but it also offers commuters an added benefit of exercise. For example, a two-mile bike ride can burn 100 calories. And this type of cycling can decrease the chance of diabetes, depression, dementia, cardiovascular disease, cancer, and high blood pressure. As this picture clearly shows, in front of the Robinson Middle School, there is no bike lanes anywhere around the school, which could also be a good hope for kids to ride to school. Not only for the kids, but anyone who would like to ride their bike, but since the lack of bike lanes, it's unsafe for most people to ride.
Our class did a survey, and 69.5% middle schoolers in Lowell, Massachusetts voted that they do not have bike lanes near their school.
We would like to say thank you for the time and having us here today. Do you have any questions for us in general?
Any question from any, or comments from any of the councilors? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. Well, thank you for coming down and sharing the presentation. Your presentation does say it all, you know, we have an issue with the narrow streets, but this is what it's about. You brought an issue to our attention. We'll take a good look at it, and we'll follow up with a report from the manager's office. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you very much for coming down and bringing our attention to this. This is something that is true across the city and is particularly true up in Pawtucketville, as you noted with the map, and Centerville as well. I'm fully in support of doing whatever we can to make biking across the city safer, to be able to link our neighborhoods together, be able to get kids to schools, parks, over the bridges, to be able to, you know, come to the library, everything else. Having a functional bike network goes a long way to making a city feel more connected and be able to access a lot more things. So I'm hoping in time, now that we have a traffic engineer on staff, and it's something we can look at and something we can work towards. So thank you again for your presentation. You guys did a great job. And, you know, I appreciate you getting involved in the civic responsibility and process. And it's always great to see young faces in the chamber. So thank you so much for coming down and chatting with us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming down. I represent actually the Centerville District and Robinson School. I see a ton of kids riding bikes up that way, and I think that's something we all have to start thinking about. We're hearing it from the people that ride the bikes, that, and you provided a lot of important information that can support exactly what you're saying. So thank you very much for doing the homework on this and presenting it. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you very much for coming here this evening. I want you to know, as you probably do, that just because this building is the City Hall and it's here, some people are under the impression that this is a building of people that are older. It doesn't reflect to kids. I'm not a voter, why should I be here? But your teachers taught you well. This is a building for everybody. This is a building that's not just mine because I'm a city councilor. This is a building for everybody, where you can come up and voice your opinion about concerns and problems as you just did. This is a very valuable lesson that you just learned today. This is about everyone, and this is something that does my heart good. But the fact is, I'm very impressed that you're not nervous. I mean, I'm sitting in this chair and I'm a nervous wreck sometimes. So I got to commend you for putting your nerves aside and coming up here, because this is your building. And I'm very grateful to your teachers for teaching you that, because maybe you caught the bug, and then one day you'll be sitting in these very chairs making rules and ordinances and laws. So hopefully, we keep the same city manager though, when that happens. But thank you so much for being here. I'm very, very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the teachers who prepare you for this civic engagement, and you have done a fantastic job. You did your study, you did surveys, and you come to us and said, look, help us, you know, go from school and home safe. And bicycling is one way where we need to, as a city, looking into expanding throughout the city, accessibility for the kid, and for all, for that matter. So thank you for being here. Thanks to teachers for preparing you for this and continue working on it, okay? Thank you.
Our social studies teacher is right there. Thank you to her.
Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I echo the sentiments of the rest of the board. I'm hoping that not only that you're doing the civic engagement, but we're looking at seven future civil engineers who can actually come out and do this for all of us. And I think that's the important piece, is your presentation was better than some we've seen before. And it's really impressive to see that you guys took the time to come to us on something that means a lot to a lot of people in the city. And we thank you for taking the time and putting it forward.
Thank you for having us.
No, no other comments, just want to say from up here, this is one of my favorite petition for the bike lanes. I grew up riding bike. It was my only mode of transportation, and I'm dating myself a little bit. Those were the days when the BMX bike were very, very popular. And I look forward to, you know, we have the two of the best people that make things happen, the city manager and the director of development, planning development. So I think what you're pushing this issue, please keep on calling the manager's office if we don't get this bike lane soon, okay? But I appreciate your hard work, the research into it. All seriousness, bike lanes are very important to the health of the community for everybody. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
No other comments or questions? Councilor Leahy?
I hope they'll be on the front page since the Lowell Sun's here with Melanie, and we can get a front page story. Thank you.
I think we're pushing all the right buttons here tonight. Need a motion to refer to Transportation Engineer for report recommendation by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Gishia, on favor of the I, post, they know the I have it. The motion is unanimously passed. Congratulations. Now, it's been a few minutes past seven, we do have on the agenda the public hearing, which is line item five, so I need a motion to take the general public hearing out of order by Councilor Rook, second by Councilor Gishia. The general public hearing, 5.1, is a lone order, MSBA accelerate repair to various school buildings, $21,108,052. This portion is now open to all those in favor. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speaker in favor? Open to all those in favor. This portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose this portion, who now who would like to speak in opposition. Hearing none. This portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? By the member, Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I just wanted to ask, did the law department get a chance to go through this? I only ask because in other lone orders and things like this that have come through to us, there's been a cover letter in the past from the law department that just, you know, says, we went through this and approved as to form. And I didn't see that for this one, so I just wanted to ask the question before we voted on it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. This is in 5.1, council, that was not included in this. However, this is the standard form that we have passed, and the MSBA gives us the form that we accept, to be honest with you. I mean, when we're looking at the amount of money, the $21 million, they're putting forward 13.7, we're putting forward 7. But it is that funding mechanism when MSBA does give it to us, and we do accept it as is. But I'll make sure in the future that that cover letter is included.
Thank you. Will approve?
Would approve by Councilor Rook, second by Councilor Noon, to refer to the clerk's office for 20 days. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gishia?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rook?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Tenyes?
There's no other public hearing. We now go back to where we left off on the agenda, or maybe Councilor Noon, do you have questions?
Mr. Mayor, if you could suspend the rule taking a combined 12.5 and 12.7 out of orders because Mr. Patel has to go back to work. He's back there, he's going to speak on this.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Noon to take item 12.5 and 12.7 out of order and bundling it, second by Councilor Robinson. I'm going to read both of them, and we can address each one separately if the body wishes. 12.5, Councilor Noon requests city manager have Transportation Engineer conduct a traffic study at the intersection of Varnum Avenue and the VFW Highway. And item 12.7, Council Robinson requests city manager have the property department provide a detailed update on the St. 38 and Fairmont Street intersection. Mr. Clerk, do we have, would you like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, can I, I'm sorry, can I also include 12.10? It's similar to, same as Councilor Noon filed.
Okay, so Councilor Noon include 12.10 as well as take out of order and bundle, and second by Councilor Robinson, the same. Before we go to the speakers, let me read 12.10. Item 12.10, Council Robinson requests city manager have property department provide an update on the traffic lights on Varnum Avenue and University Avenue intersections. Mr. Clerk, please call the speaker.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilor, Mr. Manager, City Official, and my fellow Lowellian. At Varnum Avenue and VFW, I think we get the answer from the city manager today. The state, look at that, because it's going on for last one year, and I think Mr. Drinkwater knows, and most of the people living there knows, every second the pedestrian light goes off without anybody walking there. And it's creating traffic havoc both side of the Varnum Avenue and VFW. Now, coming to University Avenue and VFW intersection, it's, light works fine during the off-hours. So like at night or on the weekend, it's turning fast. But during the rush hour in the morning to all day, they give more time, almost two minutes to the University Avenue side, and less time for VFW. And traffic jam up on the VFW on both side more than miles. So I hope they can fix that. I think they answered that too. On intersection of Oakland, like Route 38 and Fairmont Street, that's going on issue for a long time. I think state made the mistake, and that time, city manager, when they done it, they convinced the city council to approve the mission because they're going to lose $4 million grant. But I have question for city council and city manager too. We have a lot of project, we made mistake and run millions and millions, so we try to fix that too. So why don't we ask the state to fix that? All the traffic, even now UPS stuff, federal extracts, DHL, all passing to my parking lot. And some is, some the accident waiting in, going to happen. And since, I have store since 1993, before traffic light, there is not a single major accident there. Only happened once, and that seven years ago, when somebody, Lowell Police Department chasing the suspect from Centralville, that suspect ran to Fairmont Street by 100 mile speed and hit the former superintendent of Technical Schools, Nish Laurie's car. So that's happened seven years ago before they fixed the intersection. So without even that, there is no accident there. And other thing too, people coming from Tewksbury to going to Fairmont Street, now they don't take right at the light. Instead of they take right at the Mr. Acason House and take immediate left on Laurel Street. And they're narrow road so much that, because they, for my parking lot boundary, they take five foot another island. So make, so narrow road, so that's going to happen some the accident there too. And I think Mr. Leahy goes by there, they knows that. Our auditor pass by walk every day, they knows how many car pass through that parking lot. And now business has a problem too, because they put the two signs, state, Mass, DOT put two sign in front of the store that not, this is not go through traffic. But my customer think you can enter this one, so they don't come to the store too. So I hope city council put state to the, change the intersection. I'm not engineer, but there is not too much cost involved to change the intersection and make like to island before. So my, thank you for listening to me, and thank you for supporting me. And this is the most accessible city hall administration I ever seen in my life. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, and Assistant Manager, all city official, and my all councilor. Thank you. that suspect ran to Fairmont Street by 100 mile speed and hit the former superintendent of technical schools, Nish Laurie's car. So that's happened seven years ago before they fixed the intersection. So without even that, there is no accident there. And other thing too, people coming from Tuxbury to going to Fairmont Street, now they don't take right at the light. Instead of they take right at the Mr. Acquation House and take immediate left on Laurel Street. And they're narrow road so much that because they, for my parking lot boundary, they take five foot another island. So make, so narrow road. So that's going to happen some day accident there too. And I think Mr. Leahy goes by there, they knows that. Our auditor pass by walk every day. They knows how many car pass through that parking lot. And now business has a problem too, because they put the two signs, state mass DOT put two sign in front of the store that not, this is not go through traffic. But my customer think you can enter this one, so they don't come to the store too. So I hope city council put state to the, change the intersection. I'm not engineer, but there is not too much cost involved to change the intersection and make like to island before. So my, thank you for listening to me and thank you for supporting me. And this is the most accessible city hall administration I ever seen in my life. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager and Assistant Manager, all city official and my all counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel, for being here. These were the motion by Counselor Noon and Counselor Robinson. Who would like to go first? Mr. Manager?
I'd like to defer to the manager.
Oh, Mr. Manager, defer to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. Councilors, thank you very much. In regards to 12.5, motion 12.5 and 12.10, as I'm looking out here, I see Counselor Rook, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Noon, Counselor Mercier. We've all talked about the intersection issues coming down Varnum Ave. But it's been a work in progress. We have spoken with Mass DOT and the electricians have been out there trying to figure out what the issue was or has been. So, working with the University Ave area, University Ave at VFW, they did indeed find that the time-based coordination is 100% operational. University Ave does receive a fair amount of time because of the amount of traffic. I asked them to just try to dial it back a tad to keep VFW moving as well as the University Ave. In regards to Mammoth Road, the grid smart detection system is working 100% to their satisfaction. Now, that's Mass DOT satisfaction. And the time-based coordination is, our smart lights are working correctly. The problem that Mr. Patel is bringing up is over at Varnum Ave. We received numerous phone calls. I know Counselor Rook and, as I'm looking right here, Counselor Rook, Counselor Robinson, Counselor Noon, Counselor Mercier. I can look right down the list of everybody that has contacted the office in regards to this. But the numerous issues have been found out here in this area. I'm reading from their notes, the bad pedestrian buttons. They replaced all three of those three locations. All the buttons were calling for what they refer to as a ghost call, randomly appearing, just happening. So that has been completed. They have now gone down into the loop detection area. And that's when your vehicle pulls up to the lights. The loop detection system has been damaged. They, they meaning Mass DOT, they're kind of unsure as to how that may have happened. Now, in that Varnum Ave area, we have had some water main work done. I did talk with our folks over in the water department, so they're jumping on this as well. The loop detection system, they're going to pull that permit to make sure that loop detection system is operational. So that is something that we will be working on with them in the future. But however, they call them ghost calls that just randomly set off the traffic signals. That has been fixed. But the piece with the loop detection that is currently not working, or it's not working appropriately, as it is every place else, that should be dealt with. And I do know that Mr. DeShane's, in speaking with him today, they're going to, they're going to jump on that. There was another piece that I know the councilors had brought up, and that's the lighting along the VFW down by the Hunts Falls Bridge. That had been out for quite some time. That has been taken care of as of today. And I'm sure Counselor Robinson and myself will notice that tonight if that's actually completed. So I just ask that in regards to 12.5 and 12.10, give us a little bit more time. We have been working with DOT. The electrician's been great, has been extremely responsive to us. And my hope is that we will have this dealt with, I would love to say ASAP. But we have their full attention and quite frankly and honestly, we've had their full attention for some time.
Any other comments or questions by the maker of the motion? Counselor Robinson?
No. Thank you for that update, Mr. Manager. And in regards to 12.7, that's the one that was also bundled. And that's regarding store 38. It's in Fairmont. That's not the first time it's been discussed on the council floor. And as you can hear from Mr. Patel, it's an ongoing problem. So I don't know what can be done in that area. But, I mean, he's a gentleman that's owned a small business in the city since, I believe he said 93 or whatever. So, I mean, he's reported negative impacts as a result of this modification. So I guess anything we can do to mitigate and work with the store owner is greatly appreciated. And I'm not the first to bring it forward. Plenty of my colleagues have brought this forward as well. So, thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Managers, for a quick update on the intersections of the Varnum and VFWs and other on 12.10. You know, for a, you know, positive resolutions to this. I think maybe also one thing you mentioned as well, adjusting the timing so that, you know, on the Varnum, you know, the timing for it is as equal to the University Ave. With regard to 12.7, I file a couple motion with Counselor Rook on this, asking state delegations to look into it. The major problem on 12.7 is the cut through. And the cut through is not just, cut through not just car, but also, as Mr. Patel indicated, UPS and Big Schrock, you know, and whatnot. And so it certainly, it certainly impact his business since that intersection was redo. And the intersection was done that way because there was a deal make to have the down the road Nesmiths, you know, and Anover Street redo and make it the way it is now beautiful. But in return, you know, the impact on the Fairmont and the area there and on Mr. Patel businesses continue. Anything you can do, Mr. Manager, with your connection in the state house? Mr. Patel said to me, said, make me sure you tell the managers that use his connection in the state house to help me on this. And I just want to repeat what he said. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. Is there something more we should do as a council? Can we, can we send a letter from the council to Mass DOT and just say, look, you know, there must be other projects that you've done and it just doesn't seem to work out as well as you thought it was. And this is an ongoing issue that we'd like corrected. I mean, and then get it answered once and for all. We've all had motions over, over the last couple of years. And, you know, I don't know who came up with that design. It was part of a three intersection, but it's not working out. So, is there any history? Do they ever go back and correct things that they thought they were improving? You know, that's what we just need to do. So if it takes maybe a petition from the council to put forward, then maybe that's what we should do. But I'll leave it up to your advice.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. What we can do, counselor, if it's the wish of the body, we can move forward with that type of letter going to Mass DOT. But I also am going to be leaning on, of course, the assistant city manager from DPD to see what other things that we could provide, Mr. Patel in that area. We do this for small businesses all the time. How can we, you know, maybe help with some of the X area? We do have monies that potentially could help him. So that's, we'll go down two tracks if that's okay with the, with the council, if that's the wish of the council.
Just one other thing. Is it possible for us, I, you know, that's my neighborhood. So, I never saw a lot of accidents. If they have accident data that said that's why they reconstructed it, is that something we can find? Because it didn't seem that bad to me. It seemed like, for whatever reason, they thought it was unsafe to go straight across from Boynton to Laurel. But I never saw many accidents there. So, I mean, that's really the only solution, is just to open it back up. They diverted traffic to three other streets and sort of made it worse. I just don't get it. So if we could get access to the accident data, why they changed it, that would be helpful too. Thank you.
You all said Counselor Leahy? Counselor Rook?
Yeah, quickly, Mr. Mayor. I remember Mr. Patel had, I want to say, three or four of his signatures requesting that that be looked at, to be redesigned. So I know that there was submitted previously, but if he still has them, if you add that to the letter to DOT, that'd be great.
Mr. Clerk, through Mr. Manager, request by Counselor Rook to add the signatures to the letter. Any other comments or questions by any of the council member? Hearing none on favor of the AI, post say no the eyes have it. Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for coming in to speak on these issues. We now go back on the agenda where we left off, which was item number three on the city clerk. 3.1, minutes of city council regarding meeting March 21st, 25th, Transportation Subcommittee, March 28th. City Council regular meeting, March 28th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor of the AI. Motion is passed. The, we're going to remove item four, which was, which is the unfinished business. We don't have that in front of us. So we now move to item six, the communication from city manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with motion response A.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I cut you off. But going back to 4.1, is there a reason why? Was it two weeks that was requested or not?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, that the school department just wasn't simply ready yet to, they weren't ready to answer this. It was a little bit too quick.
So my only fear is that if, you know, they, as the CFO stayed last week, they have done their, they have done their job. They came to us, they told us about it. So if we don't get this sooner or later, you know, I don't want this to become a law problem. So would it be a request to have them come back before us to a deeper dive into the bills?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. My understanding is they're actively working on this. Thank you.
No other comments or question? Counselor Robinson?
So, the procedure or process on this one, should we make a motion to defer until the school is ready to come back to present?
Mr. Clerk?
That's basically what happens, counselor, because as prior discussion had us two weeks ago, it was discussed that we're going to continue it a week. The school was here and they were agreeing with that. Then there was a call that said they weren't ready. So the best procedure to do was not to continue it next week in case they're not ready, but just to withdraw it. And when they are ready, they can come back in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We now go to the motion response A. Line striping schedule for parking lots in schools complete. Any comment, Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Do we have a representative from the police department here, Mr. Manager? Good evening, deputy. I just have a couple quick questions. Because as you read the report, it basically outlines that you're down a person in the sign department. And as long as, I think I've been on the council, we've been down a person in the sign department. And I'm just wondering, how long this position has been out to the public for, to fill? And when do you expect it to be filled?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. It's a three-person, council is a three-person crew. One person is currently out on injury. And the second person has been hired, has just been hired. So, within the next week to 10 days, we should have a two-person crew over there. And then we're working on a third because of the injury. I wasn't aware, deputy, I don't know if you knew all of that. So, I want to jump on that.
Yeah, so if, I can expand a little bit. So, the, we had a, there was, it was three individuals in the unit. There was a retirement last year, so that was, there was a retirement last year, so that was posted in April. Deadline for that was May. We did the hiring process and the internal candidate was hired. So that was, so it went from three to two with the retirement. And we didn't backfill to the third because we hired the internal candidate. So then that position that was then opened because the internal candidate got the job was then posted. We did the hiring process for that one. We did hire an individual. That individual didn't make it through the probationary period. We then reposted it again. And now we're hiring an individual now who should be starting within the next week or two.
Through you to the manager. When someone's out on workman's comp, and it's a long-term workman's comp because they're hurt, do, is there a way to hire someone temporary, maybe either through the career center or some other avenue that we could put somebody in these, especially where this position is so needed. And then we're going out to contracting, so we end up paying prevailing wage on this. So, is there a way of doing something like that?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That was a question that we had. I don't have the answer for you right now, counselor. Because currently, right now, in that department, we have three, three individuals. One is working, one is out, and one we're hiring. So it's that second individual that we kind of been raising that question about. That person is still currently on, you know, quote unquote, "the books." So, that is, that is something that we have, we're looking at. And I don't want to put the, our attorney on the spot right now, but that's something we just simply discussed actually today.
To me, and I only elaborate on this because I think it's an extreme public safety issue when we start looking at the crosswalks. And right now is really good time to get the street sweepers out, get the crosswalks painted and get moving. And when you're shorthanded to a staff like that, and we're not only talking about painting in this department, we're also talking about signage. And when you look at the signage throughout this city, the faded signs that are out there and everything, and I'm not pushing this on one administration or another, I'm just saying that when you look at the signs out there, it's really not reasonable to have three people to begin with. But then when you're down one and one isn't filled, it seems like we're just going to be paying, or we just have to live with the public safety issue. And I think it really puts a demand on the, on the police officers in, when you're patrolling around the schools and everything. And we're looking at, it's spring. These are viable things that we really need done this month, is painting those crosswalks around there. And it should be every spring you update those things. So that's just my concern with the whole thing, is the length of time it takes to hire. And if somebody is out, because I went on the city's website and I saw that there's 22 job openings right now. And I know that there's more vacancies than job openings. So I'm just wondering how we get these hired quicker. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, you don't have to report this today, but could you get back to the council, and I'll put this in a form of a motion, where the average time is to hire an employee within the city, from the time the position is opened to the time the position is actually filled. I think that's, that process is taking a lot longer than normal. And maybe it's because you're looking at the efficiencies of the pieces. And it may not be your administration. It's been like this for a long time. But I think that when we need positions like this, it's tough to watch this happen.
Okay. Mr., before we second that motion, Mr. Manager, would like to make comment. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I can absolutely get that information. The one issue that you would have is it's typically four to six weeks when we have a pool of candidates that we would choose from. We're still running into instances where we're not getting people applying. So that might be skewed. So I would probably have to break it into two, two sections. I mean, if we put something out and we received ample applications, then that's a typical four to six, it's four to six week timeframe, with an exception. And we've had, we've experienced this as well. If we're bringing somebody on board and they want to give their employer an extra week or two weeks, we're looking at that as a positive thing, bringing them forward. So I can have that. It's just going to be, I might have to break it up into two different sections of when we actually have a pool of candidates and when we may not have a pool of candidates. If that's, if that's okay with you, councilor?
Yeah, just, just the policy on it. Because what's the timeframe that the department actually puts in the paperwork to have the person actually hired? Is it, is it a right away thing? Are they being told? I don't know those answers, but it seems like in some departments, faster than others. In some departments, it just take longer. And I thank you for even looking at this. I think it's important that we try to fill these positions because they're absolutely needed if they were in our budget. So, thank you.
Counselor Gishia, that you still want to make that the motion or is satisfied with the managers?
I don't think I need the motion. If the manager just is going to share it to the entire council, it's fine.
Okay, well, any other comments on this issue? Counselor Yam, had your hand up?
It sounds like Mr. Manager need indeed, but of all serious, honest, the same situation, the same sentiment I have like Counselor Gishia. Last year, we were talking about the person is down for one and then only two staff working. And now we learned that it's only one person crews working to, to do the parking line, to do the lining and all of that. And I have the same question as Counselor Gishia regarding, you know, why it takes so long? Why we down to one since last year? And we still have it. Hopefully we have a new person on board soon. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Couple things that, listening to the conversation, how come we're kind of, it doesn't seem like we're doing the anticipated vacancies anymore? Maybe that could help streamline some of this onboard and stuff that we're constantly up against. And also, I realize, I think as long as I worked for the city, sign department's been under the police under the police umbrella. Is there a specific reason why? Or is there other efficiencies to be had by maybe looking at some other potential departments that would be a better fit, that the people would have a similar skill set already in the job title with the unions, that you'd be able to work with a different pool? I mean, it's just a thought I'm asking. Thank you.
Does Mr. Manager want to address it now or later?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. In speaking just to the sign department, I don't like to always talk about this stuff, but this is all stuff we're discussing. That has come up as an issue, especially with the sign department being under the police department, and looking potentially, you know, DPW comes to mind, to be quite honest with you. So that's, those discussions have been happening, and it's a good idea that we're going to continue to dig down on. So thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Councilor Gishia?
On second thought, if the manager could actually share it publicly, so it would be in the form of motion, I just think that people should be able to see it. My other question is, when somebody goes out on comp, does insurance pick that up, or does it come out of the personnel side of the budget? I guess that's a question to the auditor.
Through Mr. Manager to the auditor.
If somebody goes out on workers' compensation, the salary is charged to the department's salary line item. All medical expenses have another line item, but the salary is still charged.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Gishia, for clarity, can you phrase the motion so the clerk can write down for clarification?
Just a motion to have the city manager report back to the city council that the time it takes from actual a person leaves the city, resigns, retires, et cetera, to the time the position's filled.
Motion by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Janess. Any comments or questions on that motion? Here none, on favor of the I, opposed and no, the I's have it. Motion's carried. Before we take the next motion response, I believe Counselor Mercier had her hands up. Counselor Mercier?
I don't think I did.
No, you know?
Maybe I was yawning.
Would there be somebody to bring a motion under the suspension of rules? No, you don't want to do that now?
No, but I will next item.
Okay, all right. The next motion response is on the police calls on main number not answered by live dispatcher. Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you, and I'm glad that Deputy LeBlanc is there, because I do have some concerns. We did get a response to this, and I'm very grateful. On February 19th of this year, we have a new automated attendance system for when you place a call that's non-emergency at the 3-2-0-0 number. At one point in time, I did do that, and it seemed like there were no dispatches available, so they put me on, they told me, "Leave a message and we'll get back to you," and I thought, "Ooh, that's not a good thing." But we did get a response to it, and, and when you call 3-2-0-0, 90% of the time, you're calling because it isn't a life-threatening situation, but to everyone that's calling, it is an emergency to them, just not warranted a 911 number call, because it's very important to that person. Maybe it wouldn't be to me, but to them and the person calling, it is. So having said that, the system is good in many ways, because when you first call, it, it says, "Press one or two or whatever, whatever language that you want," so right off the bat, that's a good thing. It says to speak with the dispatcher in our communication center, press one. And when I pressed one the other day, I did get a person. Is there ever a time, Deputy, that we're calling 911, I mean, not 911, we're calling one, we're dialing that one to get a dispatcher, but we're not getting a person because they're all busy?
The only thing I can deduce is that where it gives you the language options, if you were to hit one during that language option, it might pick the language that would be number one, but at any time you press zero, it does definitely go to, directly to dispatch, and we've tested it now since you've made your motion.
Okay. Because it didn't do that to me the last time, and I felt bad calling the dispatcher, saying, "I'm just testing this out, I hope you're not upset." So that's a good thing.
You were doing it, I did it a number of times today, too.
Right, thank you. So I'm very pleased, because I think to put someone on a, you know, speaker to say, on a recording that says, "Leave a message, we'll get back to you," that's not acceptable to me. So that's good, I'm very happy about that. Having said that, Mr. Mayor, if there's anybody else that wants to comment on that, last week, I made a motion, because I told you after I talked about this, I would make a motion as to why I called 3-2-0-0. Having said that, I made a motion, I gave it to the city clerk, and it never got on the agenda. So since the chief, Deputy Chief is here, is it possible I could suspend the rules to bring in that motion? It's on the substitute agenda, the improved...
Motion by Counselor Mercier to suspend the rule and put a motion on the floor, second by Counselor Yam. Counselor Mercier?
And the motion reads, "Request the manager have police presence walking the beat after mass ends, after the eight and 12 noon mass at the shrine, so elderly will not be preyed upon after every mass." And when I say that, it's, and I mean seven days a week, and that's the motion, but if I can just say, there are many, many times when I don't make a motion, I do things off the council floor. This is one of those times. And I think that the police responded very well, because there was police presence when people were getting out of mass at the shrine on Lee Street. But it seemed like everything turned fine, and then people go away, and there's no more police, and then they come back again. And this is where we are right now, Deputy Chief. I firmly believe that when, and I get calls from many, many people, I thought that it had subsided, but it's back again. You have people that are elderly coming out of the mass at the shrine at eight, the mass is at eight, it ends at 8:30, then there's one at noon, it ends at 12:30. And I don't know if people are walking the beat, I don't know if the police are doing that on Sunday, but I don't know how difficult that would be to just have a police presence at those particular times. People are crafty, they're looking for money, and they're saying, "Who can we prey upon?" And I don't mean pray, but pray the other pray. And they're going and seeing people coming out of mass. Number one, they're elderly. Number one, they must think, "Ooh, they're very religious, they'll have a heart and they'll give me money." And the people probably don't, so now they're getting their friends. So when three men are homeless and they're preying on one elderly woman, I'm not happy about that, and that's what is happening on Lee Street. The people that perform, do the service at the mass, call me and tell me that it's picking up again, where people are being preyed upon, I don't want anybody to be hurt. I want someone to be able to go to mass, and maybe they're preying for me, so that's a good thing, and they will come out, and I want them to be safe, to feel that they can get in their car and leave. And that's all I'm asking, is that we could have police presence there at those times, not all day long, but when the mass gets out, okay?
I know the secretary captain had spoken with the church prior, but I'll have the secretary captain reach out to them again and connect with them and make sure everybody's safe over there.
Thank you so much, because that could be your mother, that could be our loved one, that I don't want to see them hurt or preyed upon, or intimidated, feel intimidated. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. If we could get an answer, too, I don't know why we let these individuals live in the parking lot. I don't know if it's owned by National Parks, but it's kind of ironic. They were staying at the church, and they were a problem. The church kicked them out, now they live across the street, and it's like, why are we letting them, you know, with time of valuable man hours? You can't live there in the parking lot. So if we could get to the bottom, the root problem here, and find out why we're allowing them to live there, that could solve the whole thing. Thank you.
Any other comments on that motion? Motion suspended, Counselor Yam? No other comments or questions? On the I, opposed and no, the I's have it. Motion is passed. No other suspension of rules. We now go back to the agenda where we left off, which were the motion responses. Now we're on to motion response C. The response was to the senior work, the senior work off property. Any comment or question, Counselor Noon?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Managers. I know that F-523, we funded 20 participants, and we only have 12. You know, you like the program. This is a good program where seniors work off, you know, the program to pay off their taxes, so to speak. I think we, now we have the communication department, maybe we should, you know, really reaching out to, you know, our senior and veteran, particularly, we have senior center and trying to get more of the seniors to do that. Maybe also reach out to the other group, CMA, you know, CBA, and those organizations as well to see, you know, because I'm sure that F-524, we're probably going to fund the same number, which is 20 participants, and, you know, we have eight that do like those programs. I'm sure there's a lot of, you know, senior that could use this to, you know, more like an exemption for their taxes, so to speak. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Would you even consider kind of looking at this program? Because we have a lot of seniors that are retired, that actually rent, and they couldn't benefit from not paying a residential property tax, but they would be willing to pick up a couple dollars of spending money in their pocket, maybe, and if there's odds and jobs that could be used, required in the city, I think that's something that, if we don't fill those looking for a tax exemption, maybe, because it's already budgeted, maybe it's something that we put money in their pockets.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. This particular money, that wouldn't be able to happen, but we have, matter of fact, I think we just hired two people, two of our seniors, senior friends, who rent in the area, and they'll be working here as greeters. So we just did that, just in a different pot of money, not, not out of this. I know that Ms. Burdell, who was our chief assessor, they've done a fabulous job, anybody that's coming into the assessor's office, they're asking about their taxes. I think that's one of the number-one things, "Did you know you could do this?" And I know that our assessor's team was over at the council on aging, ensuring that everybody knew about it in that event. So to Counselor Noon's point, now that we have, you know, some more opportunity to get out there on, say, Facebook or media and whatnot, we could continue that, that campaign, that push in the future. But Counselor Robinson's point, I think it's a good idea that if we have seniors in the city that don't have, that are looking for something to do, please feel free to give us, give us a call, because we will be, we're looking to, you know, plug people into different areas and assist.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It says that these people qualified for the program, so how do you qualify for this program?
Yes, please.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor and council members. So to qualify, this is a statutory exemption program that the city adopted, funded through taxes, so it's a real estate exemption. You, to qualify, it does have income and asset thresholds, just like the other exemption programs do. So it, it really looks for the low to moderate income senior and one with limited assets, the under $73,000 in assets, and the income levels are around $27,000 and under. Low thresholds, but that's the state using HUD as the median income for low. That's, that's how that program is done. I got to say that, you know, because it had a kind of a stoppage during COVID, I think that we really felt this year, even when we were talking about the program to seniors, they were still a little hesitant to be back in public buildings. And I really hope that with fiscal '24, you know, we'll kick it off again in July. We had great responses from the other departments in the city. I had to work off people in my office. We have places for them, for the people watching on TV, you know, please reach out. We want to fill the spots, and we, you know, love the greeters. So the fact that part-time greeters are going to be there again, that's wonderful for the, for City Hall.
And when you say assets, you're not including their vehicle in...
Not including the vehicle, the vehicle counts, the house does not count.
The house does not count, but...
Right.
Oh, the vehicle does count?
It's an asset, yes.
It's an asset?
Yep. But most people's cars aren't worth quite $73,000, so...
Okay. Certainly not mine, but...
Mine neither.
Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. When we are hiring the greeters, I can't remember where we left off on this, but is it possible that we're still working on a monitor that would assist the greeter, pick the language, and they could help assist what office they need to go to? So just, if you can just update us later on on that, but that would be great, we were talking about that monitor. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Ms. Purdean has a point, though, as far as, you know, we couldn't fill all this, is, could be because of the hesitation of our seniors due to COVID. So maybe the future, F-524, we can fill all this position, because I don't think the requirement is hard enough for them to qualify. So let's hope that F-524 is better. Thank you for being here, Ms. Purdean.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for being here. We now go to the next motion response, the alphabet D. This is on union contracts, HR. Any comments or question, Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I thank the manager for putting this forward. I think it's the first time that all union contracts have been provided in any space, whether it's hard copy to the employees or to anybody altogether, which, that amazes me. But is there a way that we can put these on the webpage? Because the webpage, to me, isn't really user-friendly. I can't even find some things, I look for back and past motion responses and stuff, but when we look at the, when we look at the opening page, you have, you know, it says city council and boards, and you have paid bills, and there's all these icons. But to try and find this type of thing on there is extremely hard to find. It's there if you can navigate through using the domain that they gave us, but other than that, you really, it's tough to find. They are there, no one's questioning that piece, but they're extremely hard to get to. It's really not that user-friendly.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Thank you very much for that. Yes and no. We've talked, we've talked to MIS, and as I'm looking at our webpage right now, it is, they're trying to keep the number of icons down, but maybe there's a better way we can, maybe it's a better way we can do it on the dropdown, on the, on the dropdown side of it. But one of the major concerns that MIS has is that we have just far too many buttons, I guess, on our front page. So if I can ask MIS to look at this and potentially look to see it as a dropdown con, you know, for union contracts, if that is, is that...
Maybe if you put it under the city council and boards one, and you have union contracts in there?
That's, yeah, that's what I mean.
Because it would fall under that type of thing, is it in there?
Sure.
Because it's extremely hard to try to navigate through, do you navigate through under paid bills? Do you navigate through during, you know, complaint pieces, report of concern?
Maybe under the city council, I'm...
Yeah, if you hit the city, yeah, exactly.
Mr. Mayor, three to the council.
Mr. Manager?
Sorry about that. I'm just looking here, under the city council documents, it's put, you know, the possibility that we could put it under that. We're all, the people at home are probably wondering what we're looking at. But over to the left-hand side, there's city council documents that maybe we could put it under there to the left.
Done, Counselor Gishia?
I think that Counselor Janess just brought up a good point. It's under HR and then documents and over, so, thank you.
Counselor Gish, uh, Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was just clicking around here, and I think, I think part of the issue with why the website can feel hard to navigate is, across the top of the website, you've got the city of Lowell in the top-left corner, then the next rank down, you've got government, departments, business, how-do-I. And I don't think those, those links... And I don't think those links don't really pop out as links, as clickable. So I don't know if there's some kind of UI UX change that we can make so that those feel more interactive. I don't know, I'm not a UI UX guy, but that's, I think, the question to ask at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, three to the council. Councilor Janess, I may be calling you with, with Mr. Fernandez on the phone, so we can have that discussion a little bit deeper. I would appreciate that.
Now, the comments or questions on that motion response? We now go to the next motion response, alphabet E, all pay invoices. Any comments, questions? Councilor Gishia?
One question on the whole thing, when you start looking through, and I thank you for the report, because it outlines a lot of, we've gotten better through the years at collecting the fees, you can see, if you start looking at two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and twenty-one. Prior to that, it seems like people weren't really paying, or they weren't put into my rec. So I'm happy to see the increase in a lot of the amounts that are coming in for rentals, and I hope that it continues and we start tracking them that way. So again, thank you for the report.
Any other comments or question? This one? Here none. We now go to the next motion response, the alphabet F on outdoor dining regulations. It was a motion, response to my motion. Before I say something, Councilor Yum, would I go first? Councilor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read through the whole report, and I have a couple questions regarding the ordinance. I like the fact that the proposed to combine those two together, the outdoor seating, the streetery, I think it's good, it's overlap and all of that. So I read through from all of that, including the attachment, the sidewalk seating guideline, the sidewalks seating ordinance, and twenty-twenty streetery ordinance. The one that I have, I noticed that the sidewalk seating guideline, it's still old. It say that if you fill out application, send it to Attention Christine McCall, who she's no longer here. So I'm hoping that, you know, you update that to reflect the current administration. So, and that's. The sidewalk seating ordinance, the question I have would be regarding serving alcohol, because the outdoor is already corded off with the fence and everything. And I, I'm trying to understand the language. And then that, that's all I have. I don't have anything. And lastly, I was looking for a fees. When we fill out an application for anything, we pay application fees. So, you know, I'm not going to ask the, you know, charge like Boston, North End, the city of Boston charged the restaurant seventy-five hundred. I'm not looking for that, but at least, you know, the city pays staff, will reimburse their staff time, all of that, you know, reasonable fees. You apply for fishing, you know, you have to pay twenty-nine dollars, you know, to go fishing in a pond in your own cities and town. And here we are, you know, providing additional services to our restaurant in the city, and there's no fees in it. So I would advocate to have some reasonable fee, you know, so that the city would recoup some of the time that the staff put it together. So we help the businesses, the businesses also in turn help the city as well. Lastly, during the pandemic, the city provide these jersey barriers with all the designs and everything. Will the city provide that, you know, cement with all the decorating jersey to all businesses? If that's, if the city still provide that, that's the time of the DPW staff that spend on it, and that's why, where the fee also offsets some of the time that DPW and the staff is working on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. That's very comprehensive comments there. And I wonder if Ms. Bayes Rose could make comments to some of the ask that the council was asking for, basically regards to alcohol outside the establishment on the sidewalk and the fees, charge or not charge. But also, more important, I saw in the report, that's an excellent report also, comprehensive as well, but on the insurance, I don't know if you know what is the average cost of those insurance, if they, if it is an additional extra cost for the insurance for having service outside. And also, last ask by Councilor Yum was on the jersey barriers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to toss it over to Allison Carter, the Director of Economic Development.
Thank you. Okay, so the fees, I'm not sure what they have been historically for sidewalk seating, because this is my first spring here. But I'll look into it, and I do think for the, I think a lot of fees have been waived for the pandemic to get, have businesses get through, but for the new permanent program, I think there will be a fee that will account for the administrative costs and also potentially even some of the parking revenue. The alcohol service piece of it, the state has typically had rules that alcohol can't pass over a public way. So that's why it has to be, the sidewalk seating has to be like right up against the building or contiguous, and that's what made it complicated to do things in the street, because the sidewalk is a public way. And so, but essentially, the state has extended, extended that emergency order, and we have to extend it for one more year. And then beyond that, if we promulgate our own regulations locally, we're, we are free to do whatever we approve here at the local level.
Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. I've had a business owner, a couple, reach out to me in regards to this, because April first, I believe, is when this was slated to take place, and they said it was a little confusing, and they've done it the past couple of years. Is there anything this council can do to streamline this process at this point, as far as make it a permanent condition based on the state, obviously, but outside of that, to the point where a business can almost re-up for the next season at the end of the current season, if they, if they choose to do so? So they don't skip a beat? So then April first is the rollout date, these businesses have already paid the fees or whatever is required, they've, they've provided proof of insurance, and they hit the ground running, because some of this stuff is so up in the air, the concerns are, they lose a month. Today was sixty-four degrees up, and you're at the mercy of Mother Nature, especially early and late in the season. So I think every hour that they can get out there and make their money is a great help to them. So anything that this council could do to kind of cement and solidify or streamline process, I'd be all ears. Thank you.
Excellent comment. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilor, we have talked, well, I've personally talked to a couple of the business owners, and it is a little bit of a challenge sometimes, especially, and the number one piece that always comes back is simply the insurance, when they have the insurance to be able to do this. I think that, Ms. Carter and I have discussed this, I mean, I personally would love to see it twenty, twelve months a year, from my own, you know, because just a couple of weeks ago, I mean, it was St. Patrick's Day, and I was, happened to be talking to a couple of business owners down there, and I said, boy, wouldn't have been a great day. And they just, they had talked about the challenge that they would have had, getting the insurance, getting all of their equipment. So it is something that we should make it a lot easier for our businesses to do. That's something that we have discussed in economic development. Right now, we're going to, to try to move forward with this year's, you know, typical, it was actually really not typical, but an eatery situation where, but our hope would be that this would be, I mean, for my own personal reasons, and, you know, the LPD was in favor of this, this would be something that we should be able to open up to our restaurants, where they, they could have that opportunity to be doing this on a far regular basis. But the one concern I did hear from the two restaurants that I spoke to was just simply the, the cost of the insurance, and would they, is it worth having? When I say year-round, I hope everyone understands what I'm saying. I don't, I don't mean in the middle of a snowstorm. But, you know, where they have access to their, to their areas. So there are some challenges. Ms. Carter and I have talked about it, but I agree with you. If there's something that we could do to have this done earlier on, or they're excited to do this, I think this just makes it a lot easier for their planning purposes.
Thank you.
Councilor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Carter. We've heard in the past that there was lost revenue from this for parking. I'm not sure, I'm not sold on that, because I think if you're going down there and you're going to park, you're going to move to a different spot. So I'm not sure that there's really lost revenue is being stated. But has anybody ever analyzed that and said, is it true lost revenue? Because if it's generating business, they're parking somewhere else. So that's why I'm trying to find out. When we talk about the parking department and revenue's going down, this was brought forth, is lost revenue due to this? But if the businesses are thriving, and this is something that's bringing people to the city, I would think revenue would be going in the opposite direction.
I really appreciate that question. It's actually been studied and found that the, when you take into account the meals tax, all the tax revenue and the money that's being spent at the businesses, there actually is a net gain for repurposing a certain amount of parking for business uses. So that, I believe, is a good use, and I think when done judiciously and analyzing the overall parking impacts in a given neighborhood, you can look at it and say, you know, this neighborhood isn't being overly impacted by a parking loss, and to allocate three or four spaces for a couple businesses to get a few extra seats is actually going to benefit the city.
Yeah, to me, the driver is if the business has more people in it, that means there's more parking, but they're parking elsewhere, and some of those spots may be into garages or somewhere else. So that's why when that was posed, that was my first thought, is if this generates more business, then it should be more parking, but it's just not in those specific spots. So it would generate more money for parking is an advantage, and I just wanted to think about that and clarify that. So if this works out for everybody in the end, if the driver is more business downtown, there's going to be more people parking elsewhere, and the driver is, the revenues actually don't go down from the parking, because they're just shared over a different area. So I thank you for that answer.
Councilor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the insurance, I understand that the restaurant have their own liability insurance. We have friends who own a restaurant, so just if you have an outdoor, you buy additional coverage to cover the outdoor. So I, I'm not sure that, you know, the manager is talking about somebody who having issue with the insurance. I'm not sure if that's the situation, because I know of a friend who own a restaurant, they have to have a certain coverage anyway. So by having extended the coverage onto the sidewalk outdoor in front of their restaurant, it may cost a bit more. So maybe shop around, find a different insurance providers. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. No other comments or questions? Well, I thank both Ally and Giovanni for this excellent report, as from all the comments from the council, there is an interest in making this permanent. No other comments? We go to the next motion response, the alphabet F. Actually, the next alphabet G, I apologize, on field improvement. Councilor Robinson, Councilor Gishia, who would like to go first?
Thank you. So this report here, it's very vague. I mean, the request was very specific, specifically laser-graded. I mean, that was the key piece, because that was getting contracted out. And it just says the scope of work for each field varied depending on existing conditions, yada, yada. There's been a mound of stone dust sitting at McPherson's for nine months now, and, and I mean, I don't know, are these fields getting laser-graded? Are we doing them in-house? Are they, I mean, there's a lot of questions here. And then, I know there's only one crew that I've seen go around to all the fields, that's replacing the rubbers, the mounds, and doing the spring maintenance stuff, which is incredible feat for nineteen fields for two people to do. I thought we were, we were going out to get our fields brought up to snuff with a contract, and that we would be on the hook for the regular maintenance aspect. And if that's the case, it also discusses improvements with capital dollars. What improvements are being done? We have youth build doing dugouts, and as far as the conditions of the field themselves, I don't know who's doing the work and what work is even going on. There's not really a clear answer. I mean, they list the nineteen fields, and collaboratively with who? I mean, this is a very vague response, specifically around what work and who's doing the work. I don't really get too many answers based on what's provided here. Thank you.
Any comments, Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. I would ask that this motion response, we go back to you. I just think that nothing is outlined. It doesn't say anything. It basically comes down and says the scope of work for each field depending on existing conditions. Really, what did they do at Montblanc Field? Do we have somebody here who can answer that? What did we do at Le Blank Field? That's what we asked. How did we get these ready? What was out there? And it says it, including such details as laser grading in time. There's no information here. You know, and people are complaining, it's certain fields, there's no barrels out. You know, some of the fields, they don't feel was, were even addressed in a lot of ways. The Mahoney family last night was here during one of the subcommittee meetings, and they were pushing that that field wasn't even touched. But it's listed here as one of the nineteen locations across the city. And, you know, again, we're not, we're looking for the city to promote themselves. If you do something good, put it on here. We're trying to help out, but at the same time, we want residents to understand that they do go over there, and these things are being done, because these are the phone calls we get from the people that we've been around for a very long period of time, is the pitcher's mound's off, first base is back, you know, it just doesn't, there's a lot of things that don't line up. So if we could come back with this and just have it detailed, what actually was done at Montblanc Field? Were the barrels put out? Was it laser-graded? Was the field cut? I don't know those answers. And maybe Councilor Rook would know better on Montblanc Field, because it's in Patacaville, but I don't know. So it really didn't tell me anything.
Councilor Yum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this report, I look at all the parks that were said to be working on, but I do not see the North Common. The North Common have a softball field, but now the Little League, Roberto Clemente Little League, also play at the North Common softball, so the width is not big enough. So therefore, I would like to add the North Common, so that we expand the field to accommodating the regular baseball, and that's all I'd like to, to ask. Thank you.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I can't speak to all the fields, but in speaking with some of those working to try to get the fields ready for the start of baseball season, I have heard that on some of the fields, the specifications for the work that was supposed to be done by the contractor have been met, and on others, they haven't, that the contractor has been out there and essentially just did not do what was, what was specified in the, in the contract, and it is getting close to season. And that relates to, you know, some of the laser grading that was supposed to be done, some of the mound rebuilds, just specifications weren't met. So I'm hoping, as it gets close, that the contractor will be back out. I know that the date mentioned in the response is that April thirtieth work is set to be complete. So, you know, hoping that, you know, this contract will be accountable, this was, you know, tax dollars, capital funding that was put into this, this project. So, you know, the, the hope is that, you know, where, where the work really wasn't up to par, that they'll be back out there to complete it by that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. So when I read the report, though, apparently there's a contract, and it's till April thirtieth. So we still have three and a half weeks left. So I don't think people should be panicking. I know permits are pulled, but according to the permit and the, in this company we hired, they have till the end of the month to get the work done. Parks don't open up until they're done, so, you know, we can check up with the contractor and see what's going on, but let's not panic. There's three and a half weeks left. That was the contract. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Again, if we do have a contractor, this report doesn't mention any of this, really. Where's, who's the contractor? What, what is the scope of the work? I'm hearing from one colleague how the scope of the work hasn't been completed in some areas, has been completed in other areas. Who's doing the work? Again, the Parks, Parks Department is working collaboratively. Public Works is working collaboratively. With who? is working collaboratively. Public Works is working collaboratively. With who? Like, this is a motion response with money, funding behind it? Who's overseeing this project? I mean, this is open space improvement. This is something that we discussed back with the previous administration. And then we just get a brief summary that someone drafted on the, it looks like on tissue paper thrown at us to say, oh, don't worry, we have three weeks left and we'll get there hopefully. You get a couple of days of rain and guess what? You're not laser grading fields. I mean, it, it's, the push is on, three and a half weeks, and, and we still don't even know who's doing what, based on the scope of the contract that went out and where's the copy of the contract. So I would support what Counselor Gishir put forward. Can we send this back for a more comprehensive report? This is, this is kind of an insult. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And targets on the PYO administration, they're, they're very happy with their fields. So just to answer that question. Thank you.
Counselor Gishir, you still making a comment? Or you want to put down a form of motion?
Yeah, if that's okay with the rest of the Council.
Motion by Counselor Gishir to...
Just revisit at the motion.
I'm sorry?
Just to revisit that motion.
Revisit the motion.
Details.
That, that's fine. So that not, you have something else to say?
I do. Through you to Yvani. There's a contract out, and I know you're aware of it. How many fields is within that contract?
Yvani?
There is a contract with a company called New England Sports Turf. And the contract with them is for these 19 fields specifically.
So one contractor picked up all 19 of these fields. When did they start that?
The contract was originally signed last fall. And there was a portion of work that was done before the winter season came. And then it was paused to then be finished out this spring before the season began.
The expectations are kind of unrealistic because you know that it snowed just a couple of weeks ago, and then it rained and everything is soaked. And there, there's no way someone is gonna be able to laser grade 19 fields. And by April 4th, that's why, what I thought we were looking at, it was a motion that said, okay, what are we doing to these fields? When they're gonna be done? When they're gonna be ready? And who's doing this stuff? So I don't believe any contractor can do this that quick. I know on the fields that I have, that we do, there's three of them. Just last week, on Wednesday, we were able to actually grade them and everything because they were just too wet. You couldn't get the equipment on them. You couldn't cut anything. So, and I believe Counselor Robinson could probably speak to that better than I can because he's around these fields a lot. But like, like, as we go through the list, I knew you had some background in this whole contract thing. And I, and I do agree with Counselor Leahy when he says, you know, they're working on it. But we're putting kids on fields and we're trying to laser grade and everything else. And we're saying, okay, yes and no. This should have been a summertime project and put it together. And I, I know what happened with this contract last year. So, and that's the hard part is these contracts are taking longer and longer and longer. They're outside our timeframe. And then we go to somebody and say, you need to get this done before they get on these fields, which, that's unfair to anybody. And, and I think that when you look at this stuff, if we're gonna sit here and try to make these fields playable, I, I think that we probably should do our contract background stuff much, much better than we actually do today. And it's going on with the line striping, to the seal coating, to everything in this city per contracts. And it goes right back that way. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you had your hands up earlier. The point has passed. Any other comments or questions on this motion response? We now go to the next motion response, the alphabet H, on the Ogdiocese property. Any comment, Counselor Leahy?
Thank you for the report. It's very good. And you guys can do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. No other comments. Next motion response, the alphabet I, on petition reserved dwelling ordinance by Charles Kafasius. Any comments to this response? Counselor Gishir?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for, for this information being sent back. After reviewing the report, and you look at the fees being charged for these green signs, $10 does nothing. And basically, you're reserving a portion of a street for $10. That's insane. And I just think that we need to revisit this fee and start charging people appropriately. Measure the square footage a car takes up and see what that price would be for a tax base for, for someone who had that in addition to their property. Because basically, you're holding up a parking spot, a full section of the city that we have to maintain, and others can't enjoy it under the other taxes that they pay. So when I look at this, $10 is like, you're wasting a clerk's time even getting these stickers together. It, there's, there's well more than that invested in employment and materials to this. And then we have to send our police out there. So I think this program needs an adjustment, and it needs one quick. And so I would make a motion that the manager revisit the cost of these signs and come back with a feasible adjustment to, to that fee.
Motion on the floor by Counselor Gishir, second by Counselor Yem. No other comments on the motion itself. On the favor of the House, the motion's passed. Counselor Leahy, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah. So the parking director's already looking at the fee. That was in another report. So, but the question I did have is, I didn't understand section G. And if you could just get back to us. So it's a situation across the city where people are reserving a spot because they don't want somebody in front of their house. So they have plenty of parking in their driveway. You should not be able to get one of these signs just because you don't want people parking in front of your house. So I think that needs to be addressed, along with the fee, which is being addressed by the parking director. Thank you.
Counselor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know what else bothers me? It's people that go out and get that sign. They put it in front of their house, reserving this particular spot by way of that sign. They never park at that spot. They park either in front of it or behind it. And they leave that open just so that nobody will park there. And that frustrates me to no end. That's not what the purpose of this sign is all about. Just so you know, that's according to E, number three, parking spaces designated as reserved under this section shall be located in such a manner as to maximize remaining unreserved public on-street parking available for other motorists. And they're not doing that. I don't know why they're trying to do that, but they're reserving the spot in front of their house, but they're not using that spot. They're parking either in front of it or back of it. And, and they're not allowing someone to park that desperately needs it. And that's not fair. So just, I had to get that off my chest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I say amen to that, Counselor Mosia. So my, my comment similar to Counselor Gishir was talking about, it costs more than $10 to make that green and white, white and green sign. So the, the fee adjustment could, could be made appropriately to see how much it costs to make that sign in addition to the staff time to provide that services to people who request that sign. Number two, like Counselor Mosia said, I'm sympathy with homeowner who has about 60 feet frontage of their home. During the summer and wintertime, they clear the snows and everything. I understand. But like Counselor Mosia said, when you have a green and white sign in front of it, park in front of that. Leave the other to allow other people to park, even though in front of your home that you maintain the sidewalks, shovel the snow and all of that. That's what it boils down to, be kind to your neighbors. And this is the kindness by parking in front of the green sign and leave the other space for other resident, your neighbor around you. My house has about 80 feet of frontage, can park up to four cars. So I have the white and green sign. I do park in it, even though I shovel the snow. But I'm happy to share with my neighbor who need a place to park. They are welcome to park in front of my house. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I was Karen, Counselor. Good job. Counselor Gishir?
Since we get into a deeper discussion about this, I want to just say that I thought the program when it first started was gonna be in specific areas, but it seems to like it branched out. Hastings Street, from Westford Street to Liberty, is a one-way street going down that's extremely narrow. So if you're on the left side of Hastings Street and you're on a home that doesn't have a driveway, and there are some, and somebody across the street has a driveway and they buy a green sign, that whole side of the street is no longer parking for anybody. And it's not fair. And I think we need to also look at the zones of where they should be able to be purchased and look at the whole parking situation again. Because this ordinance somehow went from trying to do good for areas that were tight, like back central, to, you know, you had to go and look over at other areas around you, Massalol. That, that's what it was about, was trying to help them. And somehow now it's been, I can purchase a path of the street by clicking $10 in and punching a sign out front. And it's not very fair. So I, I just wanted to revisit where these zones could be actually placed. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Janes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that this is coming up for conversation with my colleagues. I too have, you know, I'm sure we all have, have seen the stress and the aggravation that are, that parking causes. And these green signs seems to, seem to exacerbate it in many cases. So I appreciate that we're gonna take another look at this because, you know, we have to address residential parking, and we have to do it in an equitable way. And I'm not so sure that the green signs are, are meeting that goal right now. As Counselor Gishir said, I think it started well intentioned, from a good spot, and it seems to have spiraled. We've all heard stories. One I've heard is, you know, someone new to the neighborhood meets a neighbor. And, you know, everybody on the street has driveways. And the neighbor says, oh, make sure you go down to City Hall and get your, get your sign. So no one can park in front of your house. It's, you know, obviously not, or shouldn't have been, the goal of this program. So the more we can do to, to look at that and figure out ways to balance the needs of residents who have to park on the street with, with those that are, you know, clearly taking advantage of this program for other reasons, I'll certainly be in favor of that. Thank you.
On that motion response, we now go to the next motion response, the alphabet J, on subdividing HCID properties. Any comment, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you for this report. I'd like to refer this to a Neighborhood Subcommittee. There's, there's a lot in here that I'd love to have a conversation on, but for the sake of time, I'll refer this to a Neighborhood Subcommittee. One thing that I'm seeing other communities are doing, City of Boston just put out a RFP. They have a parcel of land. And they happen to want a library in the first floor with mixed income residential on the upper floors. Just went out RFP. What that does is, it allows some kind of creative control for the community as to what they'd like to see on these empty parcels. In the report, it says, you know, a smaller sized parcel won't fit the, what's the, the urban character within the district. Right now, the character of that district is dirt lots. Another piece that, that jumped out at me, parcel number 15. Basically, 85% max parcel coverage, so 15% is available. But if it was subdivided, you could increase max height to 90 feet. Why would we limit potential opportunities on that parcel, for example? Targeting 85% coverage, it might be a little too big. We're not, we're not looking at 100% coverage like we do with some of the other parcels. So there's a lot in this report that I'd love to dig into. And so I'd like to make a motion to Senate to Neighborhood Subcommittee.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Noon, on favor of the I. Motion is passed. No other comments or questions. We go to the next motion response, the alphabet K, on School Street Cemetery wall repair. This is a motion by Counselor Scott, and in the past, Counselor Yem and myself as well. Counselor Scott's not here. Counselor Yem?
Thank you for the report. I think it's long overdue. And I would just like saying that this motion was by Mayor Chow and myself back on February 21st. And, and also before that, the, the mayor also filed a motion before this council term, tried to get that done as well. But I know the, the retaining wall of the condo was done, except the, the cemeteries. Hopefully, in the report say that it will be done by Memorial Day weekend, Memorial Day 2023. So that would be great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I want to thank the manager's office for putting together that motion response and looking through the matter. This motion's came on quite a few times. So I hope it's not a teaser to me again. Looking forward to CD at the retainer wall repair. Going to the next motion response, the alphabet L, on Fort Hill, Fort Hill Avenue sidewalk request. Any comments or questions, Counselor Mosia?
Yeah, I just have a comment. We did learn, and someone did go over there from the engineer's office, and they noticed two significant challenges in respect to installing a sidewalk. The first significant challenge was an existing utility pole, which happened to be in the middle of the sidewalk. And that would be prohibiting ADA accessibility. So they would have to move that pole. And the second issue with that was an existing retaining wall that if they real, did any, it would compromise the integrity and the retaining wall would be in distress. So having said that, there's two issues right there. So I'm asking through you to the city manager, so because of these two challenges, am I to assume that this will not get done?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the Council. Counselor, we will work with them. One of the really significant pieces is that pole in the middle. That is a real problem.
Yeah.
And I'm a little unsure of how significant the wall will be. So if they were to deal with the wall, that's probably something we could continue. But then we're gonna have an issue. And I'm actually, I was looking around here real quick. But I was wondering, can we even spend that type of money on a sidewalk that wouldn't be ADA compliant? So that would be, that would be my second follow-up question.
Who owns that wall that they're talking about?
Mr. Manager?
That would be Rogers Hall would own the, the retaining wall.
I, I gave them this information. So they're aware of what the challenges are that, that was outlined here. Okay.
Counselor, they can please give myself a call or Assistant City Manager. Mashada.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Here none. That, that completes the motion response. We do have one more report under the manager's communication, which is 6.2. This is the information report on the impact of task force. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the Council. I wanted to bring up Mr. DeJesus and just have a discussion about what many of you, once again, on the Council have been talking about in regards to the Division of Developmental Services, Development Services. I say it all the time. Sorry about that. Of course, I'm being corrected all the time as well. But I think it's a good opportunity, as, as this Council has wanted, to, to move forward. And Mr. DeJesus is, is moving forward with this. And later on today, we're gonna be asked to, to provide some additional overtime for DDS staff to conduct some of these inspections. So I just wanna, if Mr. DeJesus could just give a quick rundown, I, I know we've all talked about this managers, managers' Neighborhood Impact Team, but I think it should be something that we're pretty excited about. Mr. DeJesus?
There's really nothing to talk about with the Neighborhood Managers Impact Team. They were just deployed out today. So we sent out four inspectors. So two building inspectors went out and two health inspectors went out. And all they're really doing is following chapter 227, the minimum standards of code inspections on, on the exterior of buildings. They will talk to the homeowners if there's any violations. So, so they will meet with property owners on the property if there's like overgrowth or trash, damage to the building or anything like that. So they'll be either written up, they'll give them a warning, and we'll go back five weeks later. So every week, we'll be going to a different section of the city. So hopefully, I'm trying to see if we can coordinate something for the Patacaville area for next week.
So once again, Mr. Mayor, through to the Council. Counselor, this is an opportunity for our inspectors who are out there every day doing a great job, when they have the opportunity to reach out to the other inspectors and look for a little a little bit of additional assistance. And that additional assistance could be on a Tuesday evening such as tonight, or even on the weekend, where a team of four will go out to a neighborhood just to help Inspector A, Inspector B, Inspector C, to try to keep our neighborhoods up to code. And the Assistant City Manager, Machado, has worked with this as well, obviously in the past. And it's really about safety and ensuring that neighbors are being good neighbors, which has been mentioned so many times here tonight. That's one of the pieces. But the second piece is really making sure that this is not something that'll be punitive right out of the gate. But some of the larger, we'll say landlords or absentee landlords, quite frankly, they know better. But this is an opportunity just to try to make our neighborhoods gleam, if you would, in the way that we all want them to.
Counsel Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to manager and Mr. DeJesus. I just want to commend the manager for implementing this because this is exactly what we need, you know, to spruce up, to clean up our neighborhood. Because some owners neglect and to the point that it's really become a sore spot for other neighbors who live next door. And this is a long overdue. And I commend also the fact that we not penalize people right away, but give them an opportunity to correct it and so that they will take some sort of action to clean up. And I appreciate that. My last question is that I've heard, I've heard on the radio Lloyd and the staff were talking at night. And I say to myself, why nighttime, you know, is that during the work hour or in the evening? And I like the fact that it's weekend also because sometime people think they can get away and the weekend they do some of the stuff that they're not supposed to do. So the weekend is also helpful and we might be able to meet with homeowners or something like that at home and be able to interact and talk to them about pointing out, you know, certain things that need to be corrected. And we have one building down the street from here after the library. Beautiful architectural, but it's sit there. I've done nothing to the building across from Santander Bank on Merrimack Street here. So that beautiful building, but really run down and it's become an eyesore. I remember Counseler Mercier, after the parade during the St. Patrick last year, she looked up and she said, that's beautiful building, how come nobody do anything about that? And then this program will address that and I hope many more properties will be also giving notices to keep up with their appearance. Thank you so much.
Counselo Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always under the belief that when you drive through anywhere, you don't get to see the real effect until you're walking through that neighborhood. Now you slow down and you say, oh, I never knew that was there. So that's a good thing that they're doing that neighborhood walk because they'll be able to see things that you can't see while you're driving through. So that's very good. Thank you, Mr. DeJesus. Thank you so much.
Counsel Gitchia?
Through you to Mr. DeJesus. Are we fully staffed in the inspection service departments?
Right now we are. We might, we're looking for probably another plumbing inspector and building inspector right now, I believe. That was set forth, right, Yvani?
We are, we do have a couple positions that we're looking to fill, I think, on call, a couple on-call positions, not full-time positions. But of course, I did ask for more inspectors in my budget request.
So my question is more or less, when I look at the budget right now and I'm looking from the transfer portion, because these two are kind of tied together. So I'm looking at the transfer portion, you're taking it out of the 148A fund and you're taking $20,000 out of there to put into DPD inspection. When you look at the personnel side of that budget, why didn't we just take the $20,000 out of there and just transfer it into overtime right from that account to that account? And why did we choose this account to do that? Because if it's going to generate funds, the ticket money can't be put back into this fund, but it can be put back into the general fund where you can reserve it.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Through to the council. The current fund, 148, excuse me, the transfer from the 148 currently has $123,000 in it. And that particular piece is for building, when there are building fines, that is what that money is intended for. So taking that out of that particular fund gives us that opportunity to grant that additional overtime. I hope I have that chapter correct. Okay. The chapter, Chapter 148. The legislature created that specifically for this and throughout the years, we haven't utilized it as much. We've had a meeting with DDS Department and everyone's pretty excited about moving forward with this nights and potentially the weekend opportunity to do exactly what I believe the council's been looking for.
And maybe I misread it because it said, I thought, is there a seat reserved for appropriation fund and held over from year to year for training and education of building code enforcement? So that's what we're doing with the overtime? So when we ticket, does that money go back into this fund and not into the general?
Mr. Manager, to Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. It would go back into this fund.
Oh, so then we should be able to replenish the 20 grand pretty quickly if we...
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
I would just like to say thank you. I think this has been a long time coming. It was something that was done in the past as far as the impact task force. I think we've all seen the effect that it can have on the neighborhood when it's absent and then the effect that it can have when people are out there and even just talking to neighbors, making them aware that this is going on. So I greatly appreciate this and potentially maybe it ties in down the road to something like the SCARF law that we discussed last week. This could be like infancy stage with the task force kind of getting their feet wet with getting together and going out and addressing some of the issues and maybe it works in the future with a SCARF law or something. Thank you.
Mr. Machado?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. And just so we're clear, the neighborhood walks that happen with the neighborhood groups will still continue. This is something completely separate from that. So it's important to note the neighborhood groups really like when we do that, you know, it's police, fire, the building inspectors and the health inspectors. So those will continue. This is completely separate from that.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because to be honest, I think the impact task force is a little bit more roll up your sleeves and go-to-work stuff, whereas, you know, it's a little bit more on the casual side when we're kind of sightseeing and just learning about the different issues. So thank you for both.
No other comments or questions? Also, thank you, Mr. DeJesus, for taking on the task force. Appreciate it. This completes the communication from the city manager. Now I need a motion to accept place on file by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Leahy on 50I, post say no. The ice have it. Motion is passed. We now go to the communication from the city manager on the request of out-of-state travel, one LPD and one mass hire. Any comment or question from the counselors? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Yam. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott? Ten years.
The next line items are the orders from the city manager, 7.1, vote authorize city manager execute PFA with MSBA, waifu reading and second reading by title. And the city council vote authorizing the city manager to execute the project funding agreement by and between Massachusetts School Building Authority and the city floor relative to accelerated repair program. Any comments or questions by any of the counselor? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Gitchia, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott? Ten years.
The next line item is Section 8, orders from the city manager, 8.1, order 60-day trial, waifu reading, second reading by title. And the city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City Floor, Massachusetts concerning Section 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any of the counselor? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Yam, second by Counsel Noon. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rock?
Yes.
Counsel Scott? Ten years.
The next line item is Section 8, orders from the city manager, 8.1, order 60-day trial, waifu reading, second reading by title. And the city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City Floor, Massachusetts concerning Section 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any of the counselor? Counsel Gitchia?
I want to thank you, Mr. Manager, for pushing this forward and increasing the fine piece because I think the 250 fine makes a statement and hopefully we correct this issue rapidly. Thank you.
Counsel Rock?
Yes. Quick question, please. So in checking it out, it looks like the real large commercial vehicles are targeted here. And I know there's a lot of discussion by the council with this ordinance or this, with this ease all the concerns that was spoken of by residents and counselors. It just seems like a little bit of it kind of lets, you know, it's trailer, house trailer auto homes, things like that.
I thought it was.
But I'm not sure it hits all the points that this council was talking about.
So the wording of this draft, because of the definition of a commercial vehicle in the CMR, actually leaves out a lot of the vehicles that I think the community is really concerned about, vehicles that are under 10,000. So a lot of the work trucks that are commercial vehicles in terms of the way that they're registered in the state, aren't covered by this. So I've had a discussion with the solicitor's office and Superintendent Goeller in our traffic division found municipality in the Commonwealth that has a very well-written ordinance that speaks to what I believe the council is mostly concerned about, that we could pass along to the solicitor's office so that they could mirror some of the language there, so that the vehicles that the community is concerned about will be covered. Because this, the way that the CMR defines a commercial vehicle, as you said, only applies to vehicles above 10,000 gross vehicle weight, so vans and vehicles of that nature aren't covered by this.
So, Mr. Manager, I guess it leaves up to you, you know, should we pause and come back or how you want to do it?
Counsel Rock, through Mr. Manager. I think maybe the solicitor might offer a legal opinion. Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, thank you. So I already spoke with the deputy and I think the best course of actions have it sent to the law department. And then at that point, we can make the adjustments that we need to in light of our conversation today and the, you know, the other ordinance that we came across. I think that's the best thing to do.
I think that in form of motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counsel Rock, second by Counsel Robinson. Any comments or questions on that particular motion? Counsel Gitchia, Counsel Janess, Counsel Leahy.
Through you to the city solicitor. When you go into commercial vehicles, part A, it says "commercial vehicle karma." So that's anything that has a commercial vehicle plate is considered a commercial vehicle, correct? To the solicitor?
Mr. Solicitor?
If I may, I would defer this to the deputy because we actually spoke on this earlier and he has, he got some really good insight on this, I think can be helpful.
So the CMR defines a commercial vehicle with different gross vehicle weights, but the baseline is 10,000 pounds or more. So to make it a little more confusing unfortunately, but to explain it, every vehicle defined as a commercial vehicle in the CMR needs a commercial vehicle plate, but every vehicle that needs a commercial vehicle plate is not a commercial vehicle as the definition.
Yeah, and I agree with Counsel Rock that this should go back and give us more language so we can define what the commercial vehicle is as outlined by the deputy. But when I saw "commercial vehicle karma," I'm thinking "commercial vehicle." So I thank Counsel Rock for that.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make the motion to refer back to the law department, so I'm glad that's already done. I don't have to do that. But I will just say that once this does come into effect, if we could do outreach to all the neighborhood groups just so they understand what this new rule is and what it means, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just, I'll be interested to see what happens when this comes back. But there are some people in the community, you know, they're out there trying to make an honest living. Roofers especially, they have a van, they get all their ladders on top, they park in an area where they live in an apartment building and there's no, there's nothing but off-street parking. So I want to make sure that we're not hurting some of these people if just because they have a van with ladders and they parked out in front of their apartment building, you know, what do we want them to do? I mean, we're more concerned with the bigger trucks that are parked on the sidewalks and holding up things like that. So that's just my comment. I'll wait until it comes back, but I want to make sure we're not hurting some of these people that are just here trying to make an honest living. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. This conversation came up at the neighborhood group meeting last night and I'm glad that I think with a lot of this stuff, it's been explained to me. Sometimes we need to provide our law enforcement professionals with a little more teeth or a little bit more leverage to do what we're looking to be accomplished here. So I definitely would listen to the deputy as far as, he's basically telling us, other communities do it this way and what that does is gives our law enforcement offices the teeth that they need to carry out the outcome that we're looking for. And I agree with Counsel Leahy. This isn't to negatively impact people because maybe it's something as simple as a warning. But repeat offenders and people that choose to ignore, then that's a different situation. But currently, we don't have the means to address a lot of these problems that we've been hearing time and time again. So I thank you for bringing this forward and I look forward to the revised proposal.
No other comments. The motion was by Counsel Rock, second by Counsel Robinson, on 50I, post say no. The ice have it. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is line item number 10. These are the reports from the Subcommittee. We'll start with the Neighborhood Subcommittee of April 3, 2023. Any report from Counselo Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, April 3, Monday at 6 o'clock, the Neighborhood Subcommittee met in the mayor's reception room to be televised at a later date. It could have been live though, right? To discuss details of the Lowell Neighborhood Improvement Plan, which represents $9,117,277 in the APPA funds. That's the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated towards eligible POCS projects, which will be improvements across Lowell's neighborhoods and represents about 12% of the total 76 million in municipal funds that Lowell will receive. Those present at the meeting were Counselor Eric Gitchia, Counselor Wayne Janest, Assistant City Manager/DPD Director Yvani Bayes Rose, DPD Deputy Director Camilo Espicia, Sophie Mortimer, Neighborhood Planner, Sarah Brown, Chief Design Planner. City Councilor John Drinkwater was there along with Michael Gary, our city clerk. I'd also like to mention Jessica Wilson, Design Planner, who was not with us physically at the meeting, for she was attending a national planning event meeting. event meeting, but was responsible for so much involved with the meeting, the designs of the different parks, the slides, every aspect of what was shown at the meeting. It was as if she were there. So, much hard work went into the presentation and this aspect of the APPA funding money. So, thanks to the DPD team for all the hard work. Lowell, like many municipalities, has seen a drastic increase in the use of public PAC facilities over the past three years as a result as well from the COVID-19 pandemic. And this trend shows no signs of subsiding. Increased PAC use offers great physical and mental health benefits for the community, but it also increased the strain on the physical structure of PAC fields and playground equipment. So, this money will add much-needed improvements to the upgrades for the entire city. The APPA Neighborhood Improvement Plan will include directed funding for eligible PAC projects, water and sewer infrastructure projects, and neighborhood business district improvements across Lowell's neighborhood with focus on Qualified Census Track, the QCT. And just to note that all APPA funding obligations are due December 31, 2024, and all APPA projects and spending must be completed by December 31, 2026. So, it's crucial that we get on board and have these meetings. There are eight PACs, really like 10, which are open space impact projects, one in each neighborhood of the city, representing approximately $1.1 million each. This allows APPA investments to be equitably distributed throughout the city while concentrating significant funds in PACs where they can have the most transformative impact of the entire Lowell community. Here are the eight PACs and their sections of the city, for example. Father Maguire Park, Patekaville, St. Louis Park, Centerville, Shed Park, Belvedere, O'Donnell Park, South Lowell, Clemente Park, Lower Highlands Area, North Common Acre, Hadley Park, Upper Highlands, 68 Jackson Street Downtown. And they have included the Swamp Locks Ramp and Patekaville Memorial Park. Improvements, for example, are as such. Father Maguire Park, for example, replace the mauched surface of the larger playground with poured-in-place rubber upgrade furnishings, furnishing, benches, picnic tables, trashcans, bike racks, et cetera. Replace three existing basketball courts with four new courts featuring acrylic backboards. St. Louis Park, install a recirculating splash pad. I'm only giving you a brief rundown, but there's much, much more to each park. I'm just giving you a few PACs. Shed Park constructs a new concession building with restrooms and storage for use by athletic programs. Repaint the pavilion and repair and replace the roof, et cetera. The Subcommittee went through each PAC. We heard all the scope of the work that is being proposed. We voted for all that was presented, presented except the first PAC discussed, which was at Father Maguire Park, which was to convert Mahoney's softball field into a soccer field and convert Monbloe Little League Field into a softball field, which would move the Mahoney field over to Monbloe. The Mahoney family had a large amount of family members who were concerned and spoke against this, the history being that their mother, Jan Mahoney, coached for years at that field in that location. And according to her daughter Jennifer Mahoney Brun, we voted and supported all the other projects in that park as well as all the other PACs individually. Council Janest was delighted to see that a passive PAC would be created at 68 Jackson Street. We're talking about $1,035, consisting of land capped with PIP rubber, landscaping, trees, site furnishings, picnic tables, benches, bike rack, et cetera. So, he was very pleased about that. We discussed Clemente Park and the scope of the work that park, at that park. Sothea Cherum, the Executive Director of CMAA, talked about how grateful he was for the PAC design, which he felt was well-done. But he also talked about needed improvements to the sidewalk on Middlesex Street, but overall, he was very pleased. When we discussed Shed Park and the scope of the work there, we were made aware of the concerns of Councilor John Drinkwater and Brian Durkin and their excitement to finally be at a point to have a new concession slash restroom building with completed designs. Brian Durkin said that this plan was five years in the making for a campaign we started to raise money to make this happen as well. They raised $50,000 in private community money. The project was an investment to benefit the community. Out of respect for the memory of a fine gentleman, this soon-to-be new concession stand building will be named in honor of Stephen Bardo, which was already approved by the Board of PACs. There will be signs as well along the different areas of the PACs saying, "This is where your investments begin." This is the Neighborhood Subcommittee report. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the report? Here none. Need a motion to adopt the reported progress by Council Getchier, second by Council Janess. On favor, the eye. Oppose, no, the eyes haven't. Motion is passed. The next Subcommittee report is the Joint Housing Subcommittee with the Zoning Subcommittee. Who would like to go first? Council Yam or Council Drinkwater? Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier tonight, the Joint Housing and Zoning Subcommittees met. It was actually the continuation of a meeting, or the continuation of a meeting that began on June 28 and was actually finally adjourned rather than continued earlier tonight. But the Joint Committee had met on four occasions to discuss a draft ordinance that was presented to the Subcommittee regarding the accessory dwelling units in the city. So, actually, I'm including the report from our March 21 Committee Meeting, which I think was postponed to be combined with this. And the attendees of the meeting made that very easy by being the same people for both. So, attending both Joint Subcommittee Meetings where members, myself, Council Yam, Council Leahy, and Council Noon, as well as Councilors Mercier, Robinson, Getchier, and Janess, representing the city where Assistant City Manager and DPD Director Yvani Baez-Rose, Senior Planner Francesca Sigliano, and Director of Development Services Lloyd DeJesus. Excuse me. So, the, as I said, there's been continued discussion on a draft ordinance that was presented to the Subcommittee, which would essentially legalize and make by right the permitting of accessory dwelling units. Essentially, an accessory dwelling unit is an independent housing unit with its own kitchen, bathroom, living and sleeping space that is accessory to a primary residence. They're not so different, I would say, than, you know, in addition, you may put on a home to provide some additional living space within the primary dwelling. Main difference being that the, the second area, second living area in an ADU does not need to be free-flowing. In other words, to be legal now, it could not have any locked doors between the two units and could not have a separate entrance and could not be rented. So, essentially, what this ordinance would do is allow these independent living units to be permitted and, and rented to provide some additional housing stock within the city. There is one very small zone, the urban neighborhood, single-family zone that, where ADUs are currently permitted, but only by a special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals. And there's really been very few of these permitted to date. So, this would allow a bit of an easier process to permit these units and bring more of them online. Just, just a little bit, some of the requirements, the property owner would be required to reside in either the primary dwelling or in the accessory dwelling. So, the, at the, the property has to be owner-occupied in order for the ADU to be permitted. The accessory dwelling unit could not be sold separately from the principal dwelling. And the accessory unit has to be clearly subordinate in use size and design to the principal dwelling. Additionally, the ADU, it may be attached to a home, but has to essentially comply with all of the requirements of single-family zoning. So, in terms of setback requirements and floor area ratio, all, all has to comply, including the accessory unit. If the unit is detached, the unit has to have been in existence for at least 10 years in order for that to be converted into an accessory dwelling unit. And at least one off-street parking space has to be provided for each accessory unit. Additionally, any entrance that's used exclusively for the accessory unit has to be located not facing the street. And ADU should not be less than, shall not be less than 350 square feet and not more than 35% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling. So, by those requirements, you won't have anything that's excessive in size. And one thing that was pointed out, so when you look at those requirements, by their nature, these accessory units are going to be, you know, small and subordinate to the primary residence. The idea is that by bringing on some sort of naturally occurring smaller housing that could be rented out, some, maybe to family could be rented out in the general, in the, in the market. The hope is that'll bring additional units that can be rented affordably within the city. So, at tonight's meeting, there's been a lot of public discussion, both for and against, throughout the course of the four meetings of this Joint Subcommittee. At tonight's meeting, a motion was brought forward by Council Yam to make a recommendation of this draft ordinance for consideration by the full City Council. There was an amendment added by Council Noon to all, put into the draft ordinance a one-year review period, essentially so we could get a report back to the City Council on the, the impact and effect of the ordinance in terms of how many units have been permitted and brought in line and where they're located and things like that. So, that motion was, or that amendment was accepted as a friendly amendment to Council Yam's motion to recommend the ordinance come before the full City Council. That motion passed the Joint Subcommittee unanimously. So, at a, at a future meeting after the ordinance is prepared, this will come before the full City Council for the consideration of the body. So, would open up to any other comments from my co-chair, Council Yam, or any other members present.
Council Yam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well done, Councilor. There's so detailed, so I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the councilor? Here none. Need a motion to adopt the reported progress and also to adopt the motion to, of the recommendation by Council Janess, second by Council Mercier. If there's no opposition, we'll just do a voice vote on favor, the eye. Oppose, no, the eyes haven't. Motion is passed. We now go to the next section on the agenda, which is the petition, 11.1 Claims: Three Property Damage. Any comments or questions by any of the council member? Here none. Need a motion to refer to the Law Department to report a recommendation by Council Mercier, second by Council Yam. All in favor, motion is passed. The petition by 11.2 was already taken up by the 8th grade from the Wang School. We now go to the City Council motions. We'll start right off the bat. 12.1, Council Getchier requires City Manager to provide the City Council with a list of the number of AEDs, automated external defibrillator, good way to tongue tie myself here, the city owns excluding police and fire, and the locations and municipal buildings. Second by Council Drinkwater. Council Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. This is something that I think is extremely important at this time. I think that with all the grants out there for these emergency devices, we can get them into more areas. I think there's only one in City Hall. I believe it's on the first floor. But I would think that, you know, as we go through, you'll see that we could maybe get multiple ones in different areas and start to actually inspect them because those pads, they dry out. So, it's just something that we're just trying to bring to the table, that we look at other places in the city and just try to put a spotlight on it because I think they're important for, thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. On favor, the eye. Oppose, no, the eyes haven't. Motion is passed. Motion 12.2, a motion by Council Getchier requires City Manager to report on which department is responsible for identifying damage caused by equipment contractor after the winter season is over. Second by Council Leahy. Council Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. During the winter, we watched a plow truck go right across Pine Street and push the snow up against, recklessly push it up against someone's retaining wall, right over the sidewalk and everything. And I just don't think it's fair for the city to have to obtain cost because people are driving radically. My question also to it is, how much has the, you know, what have contractors fixed in the past? And is the city fixing all the damage the contractors are doing? Or are we calling contractors back to repair this reckless driving that they've done to some areas like that? So, that's more or less what the gist of this motion is. Thank you.
Any other comments? Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank Council Getchier for putting this forward. And, you know, the, these damages that happen, it's one of the reasons that we require plow contractors to carry insurance. So, we know they're insured for it. So, you know, I don't think the city should be picking up the bill for this. So, just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Council Robinson.
Thank you. I think it's a great motion. For years, especially with the bobcat operators, they dig into lawns, they dig into grass, public roadway, I mean, public space, green space, damaged benches, and we've always repaired in-house. I don't think we should be spending money if contractors are bonded and insured. So, I think it's, it's a good time now, spring, the snow's melted. Go around and take an index of any potential damage on contracted routes. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on favor, the eye. Oppose, no, the eyes haven't. Motion is passed. The next motion is 12.3 by Council Janess, Council Getchier, Council Noon. Request City Manager to provide a report on the current status of recommendations from the 2019 Clinton Lawson HO Audit, including what has been implemented to date and the current status of other suggested improvements. Who would like to go first? Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager. This has come up in discussion on the floor a couple times recently. And so, we were all chatting and we thought it was a, a good time to put this forward and just try to, you know, kind of take a quick reset, understand where we are, what's still hanging from out there, and, you know, if some of the goals from there are still things we're looking to go after at this point, or, you know, if things have changed, be good for people to know that too. But just kind of look at a level set and understand the path forward from here.
I don't see another hands raised on favor, the eye. Motion is passed. Motion Number 12.4, a motion by Council Noon. Request City Manager ensure that noise amplification is not used in a way that negatively impacts community during the spring weather. Second by Council Robinson. Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself.
Excellent comment. Thank you, Council Noon. On the favor, the eye. Motion is passed. We are now taking up 12.5. We're now going to take up motion 12.6. A motion by Council Robinson. Request City Manager have proper department provide a report if any further steps are necessary to streamline street reads process. Second by Council Rook. Council Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself. Thank you.
Excellent comment. Motion is passed. Motion 12.7 has already been taken up. We now go to motion 12.8. A motion by Council Robinson. Request City Manager to provide a report on what percentage of our employees are currently in compliance with the state mandated, mandated computerized ethics training. Second by Council Mercier. Council Robinson.
Motion speaks for itself. Thanks.
Excellent comment. On favor, the eye. Motion is passed. We now go to motion 12.9. A motion by Council Robinson. Request City Manager have the proper department provide a report on why we've removed the LRTA bus hub from downtown and explore if it would be feasible to bring a central bus hub back. it would be feasible to bring a central bus hub back. Seconded by Councillor Janest. Councillor Robinson?
Growing up, one of the big things we always saw, it was a means to provide foot traffic into the downtown. We kept the downtown, the high school to downtown because it was centrally located. Public transportation was always the means back then for kids to get from the outreach outsides of the city into the heart of the city, as well as connectors. People going out to, in the summer months when they run the bus schedules, out to the beach when they go to Lawrence. It would put people in the heart of your downtown that might have a couple bucks to spend in the local businesses, whether it's a cup of coffee or whatever it may be while they're waiting for the transfer. So I just wonder if this would be another tool or resource that the city could look at to bring more pedestrian foot traffic into the downtown with the hopes of spurring growth and development. Thank you.
Councillor Janest?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank Councillor Robinson for bringing this forward. This was something that came up the other night in the discussion, the Steering Committee for the City Strategic Plan. In the breakout groups, it was something that was discussed by several of the folks in my group. As, you know, a change that's had an impact on the downtown, and it might be time to revisit this and look at strategies to really let people use the bus system as a way to get downtown. The way things are structured now works great if you're trying to get to the train station, but if you're trying to get to almost anywhere else in the city, it can be difficult. So whatever we can do to work with LRTA and, you know, possibly redirect a lot of this bus traffic back into the core of the downtown, it might be well-served. Thank you.
Councillor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's a great motion. Thanks to Councillor Robinson's. And this is a portion of economic development downtown by having the bus hub downtown bring the foot traffic of all the travelers that stop and change a bus to other destination while they wait, as Councillor Robinson stated. While they wait, they can get a cup of coffee, a bite to eat, and this is what we need downtown. I really appreciate the motion. Thank you.
12.10, we now go to motion 12.11. A motion by Councillor Robinson, request City Manager have proper department provide a detailed timeline, including scope of work for cleanup of all city green space, as well as a report with correction timeline on damage caused from winter operations. Seconded by Councillor Noon. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I know, uh, snow just melted, but, I mean, we have Christmas trees in the parks in some areas still, so I think this is, I'd like to get an idea of where we are on the cleanup process. Thank you.
No other comments on favor, the ayes have it. Motion is passed. The next motion is a motion by Councillor Robinson and Councillor Yam, request City Manager create a focus group task with the creation of management of maintenance of and marketing of the Lowell experience, including utilizing capital resources. Who would like to go first? Councillor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Robinson. This is what we talked about as portion of the economic development. We want to create an experience where people who are visiting Lowell for other event will then linger and then enjoy the restaurant and all of that. And that can only happen when there are enough, number one, lighting, street signage that we, that the city can provide clean sidewalk, feel safe, you can walk around. One of the thing that we learn during a trip is that the lighting, the lighting makes everything very attractive, pleasant, particularly in the winter, winter months. I drove by the City Hall and I saw the lighting, and I say, you know, this lighting is kind of boring, so we need to kind of add some color to it, and then other buildings throughout downtown, St. Anne Church, and then go on to Auditorium. These are little things that we add to make the experience coming to Lowell enjoyable, memorable one that people will say, oh, let's go back to Lowell. They, you know, I had a great experience, so that's part of the motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I think there's a lot of, lot of interest from all kinds of people, stakeholders in the community, to sit down, discuss in one room. How can we, how can we elevate the city? How can we move the city forward? So I think this is a first step, kind of a call to action. Let's see if we can get a group together and start these conversations. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. On favor, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. That was the last motion of the evening, and the next item is a surprise, number 13. Any announcement, Councillor Yam?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And we wish Councillor Gitchier a wonderful, peaceful, tranquility birthday. Today is actually his birthday. Say chill, I mean cheer. So cheer, I mean cheer, not chill.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Last meeting, the managers have informed the council that Mr. Managers pay for a table for this coming Saturday. So on behalf of the Coalition of Cambodian American Nonprofit Organization that consists of CMA, Uncle Dan Troop, Clemente Park Committees, and the Cambodian American Literacy Program, we're hosting a for Lowell first-ever Cambodian New Year Dinner Celebration that will be at Indian Conference Center this Saturday, starting 6:30 to midnight. The proceeds from there is going to go to help Clemente Park Celebration Event, as well as possibly the New Year, the Water Festival. Yep, the Water Festival. So whatever proceeds we make from there that will go to that, or those two events that Cambodian Americans usually host in those years, which is the Clemente Park, it's going to be at the April 22nd, and at the Water Festival is going to be in August. So I invite all my colleagues to go, especially wanted to pay for by the managers already. Thank you.
Councillor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate to our Assistant City Manager and DPD Director for a great article in the Sun this past Saturday. Great job, and she did a wonderful job for our city. We are blessed to have you. Thank you.
Any other announcement? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Thank you, Councillor Yam, for announcing to the councils. If Saturday evening's on your schedule, that'd be wonderfully if you could attend. But also, I want to remind everybody, this Saturday, we're also going to have your unveiling that starts promptly, I think, at 12 o'clock. So if, just to let the folks know, that there'll be some cleaning and moving and things happening this week with portraits and whatnot. So if you are seeing things moving around, that is what's happening. It's going to be this Saturday at City Hall. Please be here at 11:45 if you could, and we'll be running the event from 12 to 1. Thank you.
Any other announcement? Thank you, Mr. Manager. No other announcement. Need a motion to adjourn by Councillor Drinkwater, seconded by Councillor Rook. On favor, the ayes have it. Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.